Okay, I'll call the order, the regular meeting of the county township zoning board of appeals for June twentieth, twenty twenty four at seven o'clock P M. Um, I'd ask Mr. Shields, secretary to call the roll.
Off.
Yes.
Remy, no, Walsh, no, Shields, yes, Noel, no, Kengas?
Yes.
Okay, so we do have three commissioners here, which is a quorum for conducting a business. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. May I solicit a motion to that?
No.
Seconded.
Move to adopt the agenda, Mr. Kengas, seconded by Mr. Shields, call the roll.
Off.
Yes.
Shields, yes, Kengas?
Yes.
All right, so the agenda is adopted. The next item on the agenda is communications and or correspondence. I have, does anybody have any communications or correspondence? Uh, next item on the agenda is the swearing in. I'd ask that persons who will be, um, testifying here today with regards to, uh, the variance number two, four, zero, zero, four, and who intend to make a representations or statements, please stand and raise your right hand. Uh, do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony in these proceeds will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public hearings. Advertise public hearings, the chairperson should, will declare such a meeting open in state's person, uh, purpose and rules of procedure for the hearing. The applicant will be heard first, and the zoning board appeals may or may not take former, uh, formal action on this or these matters at the meeting. We have no public hearings today. Uh, the next item on the agenda is old business. Uh, we have possible action variance, uh, number two, four, zero, zero, four. I see Zafar and Chalina Venka Deswaran, six eighty-five South Z Road, H dash oh eight dash two seven dash three, zero, zero, dash zero, one, one, to allow construction of an accessory structure with a side yard thirteen foot setback instead of the required thirty foot side yard setback pursuant to section thirty-six dash seven five of the schedule of regulations. Well, for the persons who will be, um, making any testimony on this matter, which was up for a public hearing last month and was postponed to today, uh, come up and take a seat. And if you could identify yourselves for the record, I appreciate it.
I'm Robert Clark, I'm the owner of Four Seasons Sunners of Ann Arbor located on Jackson Road.
Thank you.
My name is Asif Zafar, I'm the homeowner at six eight five South Z Road.
Thank you. Um, as I understand from the minutes of the last meeting, because none of the commissioners present today were at that meeting.
It's John was.
Jerry was.
Oh, Jerry was, okay, Jerry was, I correct myself. Uh, two of us were not at the last meeting, um, but I understand from the minutes that it was postponed, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kengas, uh, for the applicant to submit additional information, and that's why we're here today. In the meantime, we did, I guess there was some additional information in the form of some handwritten notes on the mortgage survey, am I right on that?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah, it is absolutely correct.
All right, is, was there anything else?
And then there's some renderings of the, the structure.
The structure itself, yeah, we have several pages of that.
Yeah.
Um, okay, go ahead, Mr. Clark.
The gentleman that, uh, asked us to table it and come back with more information, his interest was understanding. He wanted to understand why we want to put it where we're putting it, okay? And why is it on a three acre lot, you can't put it someplace else, is basically what had come down. So, you know, because we presented it, but he needed to understand it. I can't remember the gentleman's name, he sat next to you, Tom. Um, and, you know, so we did, I mean, we made renderings, we drew every tree on the lot, we showed the septic field, we showed the septic tanks, and, you know, why we can't move it to that area of, of, and, and then it just comes down to the aesthetics of the, of the thing. I know that's not really a big deal when it comes to a setback, but to take a, of, what is literally a garage, and number one, it was brought up at the meeting about putting it in the front yard. Uh, you know, I, I just can't imagine putting it on Z Road and have people drive by and see another building in front of the house, which is a beautiful house, and, you know, it just would be somewhat what I would refer to as an eyesore and inappropriate. Um, so we brought the renderings, we, uh,
Okay, just for the record, so we're all on the same page. There was a picture of the, you have it right there, you're holding it, a photograph of a possible garage.
Right.
And, uh, we also got a bunch of pages of, with some numbers on them, but I don't know what the numbers were, but.
It was, yeah, it was showing how far it is from the septic tanks, how far.
No, 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 we're, we're not on the, quite not on the same page most part. Uh, we've got today, the picture, the, the photograph of a potential garage here.
Right.
A, a photograph of, uh, what appears to be the backyard, or at least a portion of it, actually two photos.
Right.
Uh, we do have that. The, the other things that are in our packet today are, this is, uh, from Midwest Mini Print, got a bunch of numbers of floor plan or something. I don't know what those all are, but, um, I'm, I'm not sure they're important either. But there's an, uh, another rendering here, uh, of the, what looks to be the front of the, uh, proposed garage and then the side of the proposed garage, correct? Uh, the other floor plan and the number sketches of, you know, the dimensions of the garage, we have that, I, I'm not sure that was, I don't know what the purpose of those were.
Well, because we're taking that garage and we're bringing mom home to live, and then we're making a bedroom, a bathroom, and then just somewhat we call a mudroom, but it's really just a, a hallway to get into the house because we're taking mom's room, and there is an entrance there, and we're bringing that floor to floor level of the house. Um, that, that again, I'm sorry, it's probably not in there, but that's, that's, that's the whole intent of putting this in another garage.
Well, okay, so, and not to cut you off, but,
No, you're fine.
I mean, these, these are, these other calculations and several pages of something that says W H Pro ninety-nine, I don't know what that is, and some others also, you see, you know, if you would, if you'd like to come up here and take a look at it, explain why are these in our pack and?
Maybe it's for another case.
I have no idea, but I just wanted.
We're gonna find out.
Wall, see, there's a wall, one, something, what's that, is that yours? Well, you don't know where it came from?
No, I didn't, so.
Okay, well, we can disregard them, I guess. Uh, and you do have some renderings of what the current garage is going to be. All right, well, I, although I appreciate it, I'm not sure what the purpose of that was.
It was just giving a reason to build the other garage.
Well, okay, I understand.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
No problem, thank you, Tim.
Yeah, and just for the record, it, it's my understanding that, uh, the purpose of the new garage, the, the non-attached garage.
Correct.
Is because the current garage, which is the attached garage, is being, uh, rebuilt into living quarters and a bathroom or whatever.
Yes.
Which is gonna be actually become part of the house.
That is correct.
Okay.
Deep runs, total nine yards.
Okay, we are then on the right, on the same page on that, I think.
And the, uh, the other important thing to note, in my opinion, is this is not going to be simply a, like a shed to store a lawnmower or some bikes and stuff. This will be, this will hold two cars, a two-car garage, and needs to be accessed through our driveway, and it's being matched in terms of roofing and siding and windows to match the house, to make it look like part of the house, and to put it elsewhere would, uh, not make sense in terms of, um, aesthetics.
More money if you had to put a driveway in and everything else just to get back to it, and then you have to walk whatever it is.
So we're trying to make it look like it's a part of the house.
Correct, as much as possible, sir.
And the, the, these other, okay, can you identify for the record, Mr. Clark or Mr. Zafar, what the new documents are that you submitted since the last meeting?
Sure, so it was requested that we give a better explanation for the reason than for the placement of this new building. And what I did bring up the fact that to the north is Polo Fields, their entrance.
But, just zero in, I, right now, and we will get, get to all that.
Okay.
Right now, I just need the documents, what documents are the new ones?
All of these, this, this is.
Or the photographs, and, or could you show me what you're holding up there? Is that the mortgage survey?
It's the survey with all the markings of what he asked for, you know, where, where the septic field was, where the septic tanks were, you know, why can't you move it around back, we, we got trees, really mature trees, and.
Okay, we, we do have a copy of that.
You do.
Who made the drawing, who, well, the mortgage survey was done a while back, but.
Yes.
Who made all this handwritten, uh?
Base of an eye.
This is Zafar and, and you?
Yes.
Based on what?
What they asked us to do is.
No, where are you getting this information from? Do we have a, no, no, hold on, because, for example, the placement of the septic field, do you have a drawing of the septic field?
I know how big it is, I know.
How do you know?
Uh, we did, we did the probe.
Okay, but you don't have, for example, you don't have anything from the county on that?
From the original installation of the septic field, no.
Yes.
That wasn't asked last time, they said just diagram it, so we did.
Okay.
The original print when we came last month didn't have any of this information, it was just a survey, and so if we were asked, can you identify in here as to, you know, where the obstructions are, where the septic tanks are, where the septic field is, so that's what we decided to do.
I appreciate that. Have you seen, uh, Mr. Luans from Carlisle Warman, his revised analysis of June eighteen, twenty?
I didn't see revised, I saw the original.
Would you like to review it now?
I would love to.
It was apparently sent to you according to this, sent, is your email sunroomclark@gmail.com?
Yes, it is.
Uh, why don't you take a look at that?
Sure.
For a moment, because I think Mr. Luang, who shouldn't be here right at the moment, Mr. Luang, are you here?
I'm here, yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure, I couldn't hear you before. Well, I heard you, but you said you couldn't hear. And while I'm on that, a little housekeeping, I saw that in the minutes at the last meeting, uh, one of the members of the audience asked to have the, um, chat feature turned on because apparently there was some problem with the audience at home who, who are looking at it in Zoom or unable to do so. Um, so do we have the chat feature on now? Oh, we don't know.
People are nodding, they raised their hand, I can let them in.
Okay, well, if there's a problem with, um, if any of the members of the audience at home who will be looking at, or wherever they are, uh, looking or attending through Zoom, and, and there's a problem, raising the hand, I guess, would be the only way we could really.
Yeah, then I could let them, you know, I could let them talk.
Okay, while we do, so members of the audience, I guess, raise your hand and, uh, Angela, if you could keep an eye on that in case it happens, because apparently there was some problem last minute, and we'll do that. That, that just came up in the minutes, so.
Yeah.
All right, I'm sorry, I, uh, interrupted. Why don't you go ahead and take a few moments to look at, uh, Mr. Luang's revised, uh, analysis, which was sent, suppose, I believe, on June eighteenth.
Actually, but I, I mean, I like some of his comments such as B, C.
You, you, you have the, you, you actually have the advantage of me because that's my only copy of the revised.
I'll read it, I'll read it.
Okay.
So, um, it would appear that an accessory structure could be placed on the two point nine acres in a conforming location. The Nile's specific variance would not deny the property the right of possession by property in the same zoning vicinity, as an accessory structure could be built in another conforming location. And what we were trying to show you with this diagram is, and I asked last time was here, where would you want us to put it? I mean, the front yard was brought up.
It's, it's not the responsibility of the Z B A to tell an applicant where they have to put something.
Yeah, probably in my time, time, I've attended five hundred to seven hundred Z B As, um, so we tried to follow what we were asked to do. I'm not saying anything if it's right or wrong, but then when I get to see, the grant of such variance or modification will not be material, materially detrimental to public welfare or materially injurious to the property or improvements in such zone or district in which the property is located. And then the comment is, as a setback abuts vacant property, we do not believe the construction of the accessory structure in this location would be detrimental to this area. The property directly to the north is Zone P U D and is adjacent to the Polo Fields entry driveway. It is unlikely that this property will ever be developed. And then, let's see, so, um, the, um, I'll just go to the comment because it's probably the most, the proposed will have no impact on the township master plan. Then E, the app, applicant's reasoning for the, applicant's reasoning for the, and.
I'm sorry, your voice dropped.
I'll, I'll do it better. The applicant, the proposed, okay, I'm sorry, the applicant's reasoning for the variance has to do with the angle of the home on the property township records would indicate the applicant is not the original owner builder of the home. Okay, that's, that's very true. I, you moved it in how long ago?
About a year.
Okay, again, it just focuses and to keep us on track here, Mr. Clark.
Sure.
Have you had an opportunity to read the revisions that are there?
I just read through it.
May I see what you're referring to?
Sure. It's bringing up good points.
Pardon?
It's bringing up very good points, in my opinion.
Well, here are, here are the revisions. You, you can have a seat, and I'll read these into the record.
Sure.
On page one, Mr. Luang makes a revised comment saying, since our last review, the applicant has provided a plan that does not appear to be drawn to scale and is generally unclear, but appears to show trees in the location of one of the alternative locations for the accessory building on the east side of the home. If this information is to be used by the zoning board of appeals, it should be drawn to scale and should be easier to understand. On page two of, of Mr. Luang's revised, uh, report, he says at the top, revised comment, the applicant has provided a drawing that attempts to show that a combination of trees and septic tanks limit the location of the accessory structure to a conforming thirty foot setback. We do not believe the drawing is to scale and is therefore not possible to make a determination if the information is accurate. The applicant should provide a scaled drawing showing a conforming location of the accessory structure with relation to the trees and septic tanks. Further, for the existing trees to be used as an extraordinary circumstance, more information on the type and size of the trees should be provided. Uh, and then under page two, under B, uh, item B, the revised comment says, see above comment regarding the provision of a scaled drawing. Under C and D, the revised comment is, in both circumstances, none. On page three, the revised comment, um, under altern, alternatives, revised comment, without a more accurate and clear drawing, we continue to believe there are conforming alternatives in this case. So, that's what Mr. Luang has said in his report, that's the reason I'm drawing it to your attention.
I do appreciate it, so what he's asking us to do is have either a landscape architect or an architect draw it to scale and place the trees and size of the trees and so on. I mean, that's something you'd have to understand if you.
I'm sorry, I, I cannot.
I'm sorry, he's asking us to get a scaled drawing, so sometimes a landscape architect can do it for us and/or an architect, and so, you know.
It can be done different ways, or getting, for example, uh, uh, this is just a suggestion.
Sure.
Uh, you get from the county the drawing of location of the septic field and the septic tanks, if there are some, I mean, that's, that's, you're the, you, meaning Mrs. Zafar and, uh, and you as his representative, are asking us to essentially give a, give a variance, uh, based upon sketches, with, with all due respect, I understand that, that we're dealing with a slightly different board here. And I don't know exactly what your understanding or what their understanding would have been last month, but it's very difficult to read this hand, these hand drawings, I'm sorry, but, but I have to agree. And the dimensions there are, I, I'm not sure they're actually to scale or whether they're estimates. But essentially, you're saying that there are large trees.
They're in the photos.
Yeah, and I, because I was there, I, I, and I'll, I guess I could say this now, we, we usually do this a little bit later in the hearing, but, uh, the commissioners are required to disclose if they visited the, um, property and spoke with anybody, and I'll, I'll take the initiative now and, and say that I did go there, uh, yesterday, and I, uh, spoke with Mr. Zafar, uh, who, uh, showed me the general area where the septic field is. And the trees were very apparent, uh, and I agree, there, there's some large mature trees there. And Mr. Zafar, I remember asking Mr. Zafar if, uh, whether he knew the dimension between the property line and the edge of his house, and he indicated that he could take a tape measure and, and try to check it, but that, uh, he thought it was on the survey, I didn't see it.
Well, no, it's, it's.
But I'm disclosing at the moment, Mr. Clark, I'm not arguing with you at all, we can, we'll clear it up, but, uh, so I asked him that, and he said that he could take a tape measure and check it, but I suggested, Mrs. Zafar, that really we were looking for, um, something along the lines of some sort of survey or measurements or something so that we knew, uh, with a bit more.
Accuracy.
Yes, accuracy. And, um, and Mr. Zafar did explain that the, the present garage was going to be remodeled into essentially part of the house.
Area.
And, uh, although we may have talked about one or two other things, I think that's the general nature of it. Mrs. Zafar, anything else that I did not disclose?
No, that was pretty much it.
Mr. Kengas, did you, uh, have an opportunity to look at the, the property or, uh, speak with anyone?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Shields, did you?
I did, on Sunday.
Okay, did you speak with anybody?
No, I did not.
Okay. Is there anything? And, and I'm doing this out of order, and we'll keep it kind of out of order because it was a postponement from a prior hearing date, so we may be covering some additional information that was already gone over, but I'm just trying to get a full understanding of why, why this would fall into the requirements of our, of our ordinance, uh, which requires certain criteria, which are all outlined here, uh, not only in the ordinance itself, but also in Mr. Luang's report, his initial report pluses, subsequent. And I wanted to give you every opportunity to explain that, and I understand that the, the reason why you want to do it, uh, because the house is essentially being expanded, and you want it, you want it, you know, a garage. I guess I'll ask the applicant again to explain any other exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions applicable to this property that do not apply generally to other properties or classes of uses in the same district.
I don't think the other ones back up to Polo Fields, I don't think they back up.
They all back up to some, every property backs up to something.
In every area, I guess, but this one stands alone next to Polo Fields. It's the first house that is south on Z Road to Polo Fields entrance, doesn't, and, so I guess better way to put this is, if that's what has to happen, if that makes that clearer and/or more clear, then that's a, just a condition that we have to decide. I mean, you know, it, it's, it's, it is an expenditure, uh, I've got guys that can do it.
Mr. Clark?
I'm sorry, I have guys that.
You're addressing a side really.
I'm sorry, I'm speaking to him, I was speaking to him.
Okay.
I was giving him the opportunity.
Do you want to take a break and speak here?
No, 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 no.
Okay. Mr. Zafar, go ahead.
Well, um, I guess the, the, the unique thing about, uh, this case is, um, this being a garage structure requiring driveway access and, and, and being placed where the driveway ends, um, and the fact being that it's sort of like wetlands to the left and there's no houses there, um.
Wetlands in which direction, you said to the left, but that's.
I'm sorry, uh, my mistake, uh, to the north side, uh, and, and there's nothing that can be built there, and there is no visibility from another neighbor.
So there are wetlands to the north of you?
Yes, yes, it's, it's.
And he stated in his criteria, it's a P U D in. He stated in his criteria, it's a PUD, and that, at a, in your gentleman that wrote up the report, the...
Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, Mr. Lawrence, that it would, it would not be detriment to any other and backs up to a property that more than likely can never be built on.
And so just a...
Just a moment, I'm trying to find out where wetlands are referred to.
They refer to it as PUD, a PUD?
Well, yeah, Planned Unit Development, that's not necessarily, in fact, really isn't a wetland.
You don't want to walk, you don't want to walk in. I've walked in it.
So you're paddling it on...
And so there's nothing...
Is there a wetland there, Mr. Shields?
There is definitely a body of water.
Well, that's the pond, right? Are you talking over to the north, north side?
Sorry, I, it's to the southwest, my mistake. It's to the southwest.
So is there a wetland to the north? You're talking about the pond to the south?
Right.
But that, that's really... Okay. All right, Mr. Clark, let's, if you call it a PUD, I'll understand it, but if you call it a wetland, I'll understand it, but I'm not sure I can agree.
I understand you can understand that you would not call it a wetland. I just know when I walk in it, I don't walk in there too far.
So I guess the point that I was trying to make was, that's the entrance road for Polo Fields in there, and between the entrance road and our house is heavily wooded area, which is not going to be developed by anybody. And so there are, there's zero visibility between our house and any of the neighbors anywhere. And the only neighbor that can see our house are the couple that are sitting back there. And when I brought it to their attention, they said we can come to the meeting and kind of vouch for that, that it is not...
If you wish for them to speak, would you have them sign up here and...
Yes, yes.
And have them, would, I'm sorry, did you take the oath?
No, I didn't.
No, we didn't. So we will, if you would like us to.
It depends on whether the applicant wishes to call you as a witness, that's fine.
Okay, okay.
So I, you know, as the only neighbors that we can see from our house, I think they can vouch for us, saying that, you know, that...
Well, they can give their opinion.
They can give their opinion. And so...
If you wish them to testify, why don't we just take a moment?
Sure.
Have them sign the sheet appropriately, and then I'll swear them in. May I ask you to both stand and raise your right hand?
Yes.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that your testimony in these proceedings will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Please sit down. Could you identify yourselves for the record by name?
I'm Marta Dalpra.
What, how do you spell your last name?
D A L P R A, Dalpra.
Good.
And this is my husband, Mark.
Okay, Dalpra?
Yep.
All right.
727 South Zeeb, she's right next door, just to the south.
So you're the neighbor to the south of the property at issue? And does your property go, the entire length of Mr.?
Yes.
The whole length of the property of...
It's funny, it's funny property.
It's what?
It's funny property because the two, there's three pieces of property that were plotted out. The two on the outside are Ls. He has the L on the north side, our neighbor to the south has another L. Our property is in the middle, and it only has an easement out to Zebra. So, but essentially, yes, we're, we're his only neighbor to the south.
To the south, okay. And what, what would you like to say, you know, relevant to this particular application?
Well, first of all, I've been trying to figure out where my septic field has been forever, and the only information I can get from the county is on one of those survey map things, and it doesn't tell you exactly where your septic field is. And that's, his, his house was put in a year or two before our house was, so it's, I don't know how you would exactly figure out where the field is. And, but we've got no problem with him putting a garage in there.
Okay, but that wouldn't be really adjacent to your...
No, it's on, it's on the other side. Yeah.
All right, anything else that either of you would like to say?
Yeah, we've been there for thirty-five years at our house, and that strip of land that's in question that the Polo Fields owns, no one has ever done anything with that. It's, it's just there. It's just a strip of land with, you know, very, various trees growing in there, and like Bob said, it, it tends to be wet in there. Yeah.
For the record, you're referring to Mr. Clark?
Yes, Mr. Clark.
Yeah, they brought something that's pretty interesting, I don't know if you want to look at it.
What, describe what you're referring to.
Google Earth.
Okay.
It shows their property and their, this property. Shows every tree, everything that, and it shows the septic field. Pretty easy to see, but it's up to you. If you want to look at it, you're more than welcome to, but...
Who's septic field? The Mr. and Mrs. Dalpra?
No, Zafar.
Well, okay, may I ask why it wasn't submitted to us before?
I, they're smarter than me to bring this.
I pulled it up on my phone. Okay.
I could just make a request that, just knowing the limitations of where this logical location is for the garage, we can, more than, you know, we're happy to provide to the scale where the septic fields are, where the septic tanks are. The point that I'm trying to make is I wouldn't be able to take my car through those locations because just the way the house is situated, it would make no sense to put the garage anywhere else. And the reason we're asking for that variance is there are no visibility from anybody. Even our next-door neighbor would have very limited visibility from their house, knowing as large as the properties are, and knowing that this heavily wooded area to the, immediately to the north of it, there, there are no houses, and there's no plans for any houses.
I agree with you. I agree with you. There's no question, Mr. Zafar, that that's a, at the very least, you can call it heavily vegetated section, because when I was there, it was very clear. I understand that.
And just, and this is just my personal rookie mistake. I have, you know, made some commitments, knowing, not knowing the issues that we're going to run into in terms of financial commitments, renting your equipment to store the things that are going to be housed in the garage, and ordering equipment from a supplier. And so I'm getting constantly pushed by them that we have to deliver, we have to deliver. And so I've tried to push them as far as I can to a point where they will have to issue credit, partial credits, and I'll end up losing a certain amount of money. And it's not the ZBA's problem or...
Is there anything that the township has done that caused that problem?
No, and like I said, it's my mistake. It was a rookie mistake not doing, and I admit that, but I am in a little bit of a jam, and I'm requesting for, I'm requesting for some leniency. I'm requesting for just knowing the situation that we're dealing with in terms of there's no complaints or issues with any other neighbor. I'm hoping that you take that under consideration and possibly for me to continue with the project, it would ease a lot, a lot of stress for me.
Now, you've obviously spoken with the Dalpras. Have you spoken with anyone from the Polo Fields?
There are no neighbors.
He's asking.
Have you spoken with anyone, I assume that's Polo Fields' property?
Yes.
Have you spoken with anyone from the Polo Fields, asking whether they had any objection or whether they would consent to a building which doesn't meet the minimum setbacks?
I have not spoken with any officials, because there's no residents. I didn't think that that would be a problem, but I'm sure that there are administrators. But, you know, just knowing that how heavily wooded that area is, and there's zero visibility, I was under the impression that the ZBA would take that under consideration. I'm, I'm very new to this, this is not my expertise, and so I'm learning as we go. And if I was a veteran in this, I would have probably provided more information than you would need. It's just unfortunate, I'm not that experienced, but I, just being upfront, I just, I felt that the information that we're providing would be sufficient, just knowing that there are, there's nobody being impacted by this action. And just, just having no other, if I had two or three different options here, there, or somewhere else, I could understand having a little longer, or, or some reason to have a long discussion about this, but in my particular case, I can, if we don't do this, I will just have to just cancel out the whole plans and just end up losing my deposits and money and just take it as a lesson learned. I don't have any other options at this point. I cannot put it in my backyard, I cannot put it in my front yard. That's where my driveway ends, and that's the only place I can put it. There's no other person impacted by it, and I'm just asking for some leniency and some judgment on this to say that no harm is being done to anybody.
Could I ask a question? Could I ask a question?
Question?
Yeah.
I suppose.
Yeah, nobody contests this if the owner, it's a new owner of the Polo Fields, too. If they don't contest it, then it could go ahead, or?
I, I, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn here, so correct me, gentlemen, if I, if I step out of bounds here. But because of the rather unusual procedural standpoint, when we had it up last time, it's come here, and we're having to reacquaint ourselves, we're, we're kind of off the usual path of, of what occurs during, you know, one of these applications. But I'll say this, in partial response to Ms. Dalpra, the setbacks throughout the township are there, in my opinion at least, is very minimal, minimal distances that should be honored for a variety of different reasons. And I, I've said in other cases, and it doesn't exactly apply here, but I've said in other cases that it's sort of like, it's the minimum requirement for people not living on top of each other. Now, may not be, it may not really apply in a case like this, but, but that's the general idea of any of these setbacks in the ordinance. And although notice is supposed to be given to a variety of, of adjacent parcels, in fact, you should have gotten a letter.
We did, we did.
Shouldn't a Polo Fields have gotten a letter? I assume so. I'm going to make that assumption, but that, that does not mean if they don't come here, that they have to come to object. That's not the way it works.
Right.
It's for the applicant who meets various criteria, which are established in the zoning ordinance, to meet those criteria before being allowed a variance from what the rules are.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, I saw that.
Yes, that was something they were the only people...
No, no, no. Mr. Shields is showing me what we normally get as part of our package of a general diagram of all of the properties in the vicinity of a property that is requesting a variance, and the subject parcels noted in pink, the yellow parcels all get noticed.
So there are only a couple of them?
One, this has got to be Polo Fields, you know, here, here, I don't know, over here. I don't really know, because they're not identified. But all of these, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, get them. So if you call it just a few, I'll take issue with it. But, but again, I'm not trying to avoid responding to you, but I think it applies here, that... And Mr. Clark can, can probably back me up on this. The contractors all know this stuff, and they know that they have to meet the setbacks, which vary depending on a lot of different things, but they're all on file here at the township. And as, Mr. Clark, I'm sure you've been in here, if you've had that many zoning applications you've had to go to, you've probably been in here many, many, many times, talking with Mr. Luan and the people in the staff here about what's required, what needs to be done, what the setbacks are, and what the options are. Right?
Yes and no. I can't say absolutely yes. Have I been in here, have I got approvals for all of my other projects? Yes. I never go on a project without getting an approval from the zone.
I understand, and that's great, because you don't want to risk a, another set of problems that we're not involved with here. But you also know that there are setbacks in virtually every community in Washtenaw County.
We'll call one very clearly on Webster Church Road.
They're all over, and we all know, so... Mr. Shields, do you have any questions of the applicant?
So in terms of the questions we've got to answer, one is about the, whether it's the action of the, of you or before, or before you or the people around you. The question is, I just think I understand this, your house was built before any of the building in the Polo Fields. Okay, great, thank you.
It was a wheat field.
It's a wheat field, okay. If we were not to provide the variance, is there anything you could build in the remaining space there that would help meet your needs? The variance, is there anything you could build in the remaining space there that would help meet your needs?
Can you repeat the question, please?
So if you were not approved, to approve the variance. There is some remaining space there, is it anything you could use to put your lawn? Your lawnmower and bikes and all that stuff or?
So we really need a space, a garage space is what we need, and. That is, we, we are, you know, three drivers, soon to be four. And so we're, we need a garage space and I cannot for the life of me think of. Another place on that property that makes sense to put a garage, it just either would be. You know, and I saw in the middle of a front yard, which none of my neighbors, even Mark won't like that. And, 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 and in the back, I just, it's just septic tanks and septic fields. Two septic fields and two septic tanks and I, there is no, and, and neither of the sides, you know, obviously, you know. You have to be able to approach the garage, and so I have like no options, that is my only option. And, and, and like, and to further explain on it, if it doesn't get approved. It's a tough lesson for me. I'll end up losing a certain amount of money, it's my mistake, I totally admit it. But there's no other option for me to go, okay, option one's not working out, let's go with option two, I just don't have it. I'll just have to scrap the plans and take it as a lesson learned, and I, I've invested too much into it to. Be able to sleep at night knowing that's an option, so. That's hence I'm requesting for some logic in terms of the, the decision, some leniency. Every, every case is unique, every case is different. Mine is a unique situation. I can say with my clear conscience, nobody is being impacted. I did some math coming in here and I, this should have been part of the document submitted, I understand, but I did some quick math. I would hardly be going maybe ten feet. Of violation, you know. You know, let's say the garage is that twenty foot wide, you know, I, I may be going in. You know, ten feet into the, you know, the thirty foot minimum requirement, and so. Kind of like from this table to that table hardly, and with my clear conscience, I can say that I am not. Raising any eyebrows from any community members that are living there that are going to say, oh my God, what have you done? So that's where I'm just asking for. You know, just a judgment call on that. Like I said, I can provide that to the scale as, as required by. Mr. Luwan, I believe is the name, we can draw everything out, zoom in, provide the dimensions. More than happy to do so. I don't have any other options but to go where I am or scrap the plans and kind of. Take it as a big financial lesson for myself, but I'm hoping that you guys will. Understand my situation.
Mark brought, it's like to take a moment, Mark brought a Google Earth, Mark over here brought a Google Earth, I just want to take a moment.
Well, okay, this, this should, really should have been done before and, and, and. Mr. Zafar is saying that it, you know, additional stuff can be done, prepared by him. I don't know whether this can be postponed again, but I would suggest to you strongly, Mr. Clark, you're familiar with this stuff. Have it done beforehand. Mr. Kengis, do you have any questions for the?
No, I'm just thinking back on the original question that, you know, was posed, and that was. Show us a drawing that shows that it can't be placed anywhere else.
Reading the minutes, that was a point Mr. Walsh made.
Yeah.
As to Ms. Raymond.
Yeah.
Well, even if, yeah, well, well, we, we can get to that, but let's get to the, let's get, give the avenue, every possible. Avenue at this point, we'll figure out what to do then, we can discuss it, moving quickly in that direction, so. But let me ask you something else, Mrs. Zafar, I mean, you say this, this is the only place you can really put it, actually, you could put it. Closer to the south by moving it to the. To the east. At least, I'm looking at your rough draft. Least ten feet or maybe let's call it eight, eight feet for, for discussion purposes to the east. And then moving the, the actual garage to the south. Some, it's, I don't know exactly how much yet, because we're only talking about. Assumits here, and then extending your driveway with some additional asphalt or whatever, other material a little bit, so that it actually goes. Essentially behind your house a little bit more than you're planning to do it now, do you understand what I'm saying?
I certainly do, and, and there are very old, mature set of trees. Right in that area, I can get, I can get very close to them, I, I understand, but I. At, at the same time, we also should keep in mind, not just myself or any future homeowner. To have the, the garage moved back and over where, where you sit in the backyard, like by the deck area. To have a structure. It, it kind of is middle of your like backyard, it, it aesthetically, I think. Even though it, it, it would meet the requirements, but I, in my opinion, I'm doing injustice. To a future homeowner to say, what were you thinking to put this block of structure? Right in the, like where you sit in the backyard, you know, and it's, it is. It, it, it's one of those situations where you, if you, if you're entertaining somebody, if you're sitting, but you know. To have the structure like right in your face in the backyard, it just, I would be doing injustice to us and future homeowners to say that this. This would look quite unsightly, it would be, to put it mildly, and, and, and we discussed it. My wife and I, when we were originally discussing it, and the easement issue first. That we were aware, and, and my wife and I, we were thinking, okay, so, yeah, we can move it back, yeah, we, we can move it forward, but then again. We would be giving up just sitting in our backyard or, or just having any use of it in terms of. Ourself or entertaining somebody, we would kind of abandon that, so you know what, it's just. A, a, a garage is a garage, it's not something pretty to look at, and it would really just take up. The ambiance of the place, just the feel of the place, yes, technically, we would be able to do it, but I think, I won't be doing justice to us. Or any future homeowner by doing that, it would just be poor. Poor placement. We have considered it, like, like as you, exactly what you're referring, we thought about it, it just, I would rather not do it. And then look at it and say, oh my God, this is just in our face.
Yes, I understand, I, I do, I really do, I understand your desire for that regard. But. I guess my only response really is. That. It's, it's your choice that you wanted to redo the, your existing garage. And that's your choice. So that asking for another structure to replace something because you're expanding your house. Which I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that, but I'm saying. You have to take into account the, the setbacks and, and. What we're trying to preserve here, if the, if those reasons were valid reasons. For allowing this. Now we're getting into some opinions, I guess, so we should move along for, into a discussion phase. Oh, you do, go ahead.
So reading the documents, one of them says it's two point nine, seven acres, different documents is three point two.
I'm not aware of the three point two figure, I, my understanding is two point nine.
Okay, great. Just trying to get all the details right.
Yeah, I guess we don't have that on the mortgage survey, where are you getting it from, from Doug's report?
Yeah.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else from the applicant, let's, let's go right to the discussion part of, of the commissioners, Mr. Kengis.
One of the things that came up a little bit was that the structure itself was, needed some improvement. And I thought we thought that up in the last meeting.
Which structure, you talking about the house or?
No, the block itself, I mean, it's, you know, at least the pictures are not.
I'm not following your.
Well, I think we had discussed that there wasn't a very. Good looking structure in itself. And that. We thought maybe there could be some improvements made, and then I noticed that in. Your last submission, you had. Couple of windows or something that, and a door that we had had before. So I'm just curious if he had done anything else in trying to spruce up that building.
We certainly can, that's, that is definitely in the, in the realm of possibilities, and I can commit to that. That if you're looking for a particular, like a window or, or any, any type of.
Cultured stone or something.
Yeah, and so.
I think it's more in terms of what you were saying, that you want, you know, for future owners and stuff. And just to have a, at least a way that, I don't know what kind of walls they are, were they metal walls or?
It would be siding to match the house.
It is a, it is a pole barn, so it's piers and posts.
Yeah.
And then plywood and siding, but that siding could be trimmed as we see many. Structures that you're speaking of, it's maybe a cultured stone surround, that's going to give it.
You should show, and, and you did.
Yeah, I saw that.
So I mean, that, that, that's actually just an aesthetic situation.
Yeah.
And they would have no problem doing something.
And I can commit to those in terms of, you know, whether cultured stone. Towards the bottom or something like a window, and those are, I can commit to those on record.
That's all right. Okay. Mr. Shields, your thoughts?
Yeah, I am. Sympathetic to the situation, to your desires to take care of a relative. And your efforts to make something that's attractive. And deal with the realities of the space you're being in, you know. We take seriously, as Tom said. The notion, our job is to protect the setbacks. And that's really important to us, we rarely. Vary from that, and I'm finding the notion that aesthetics should drive us to. Change the way we do business. I find that problematic, I'm struggling with it right now.
Yeah, I agree too, I, I, I don't think aesthetics would, I don't know what was discussed at the last meeting, but. Certainly in this case, and I think in a lot of other cases, aesthetics don't really do much. To me. To either to grant or to deny variance, it may be looking good or it may not be looking good and, you know. The, the opinions vary, and believe me, what I think. Looks good is not always, for example, what my wife thinks. Believe it or not. And, and Mr. Shields, I agree with you, I mean, our job basically is to. And I guess the phrase protecting the setbacks is interesting, I never really thought about it that way, but I think you're right. Really, we're supposed to be protecting the, the zoning ordinance, and there are specific criteria here. That we have to use, we're required to use. And there's set out Mr. Luwan's analysis, which I think is a pretty good one. That begin with, you know, whether there are exceptional or extraordinary circumstances or conditions of the property that, that don't apply elsewhere. That it necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property. That will not materially be detrimental to public welfare, that doesn't, we, we agree it would not, I think. I don't think there's any discussion about that, or that the, the master plan is involved here, so. But the last one also is. Whether the circumstances or conditions upon which the variance is based aren't the result of the actions of the applicant. And that's another problematic one, I think, applying here. Because again, it's, although I think we've said in other cases that a garage may be a substantial property, right? I don't think there's a real big problem with that, but there already is a garage, it's being, the house is basically being expanded. So that, you know, you have a garage, but is it really a substantial property, right? If in fact the garage that you already have is simply being essentially getting rid of and you want to put up a structure someplace else. Now. With all of that in mind. I do agree that. The area to the north, we're, we'll call it generically the Polo Fields, but I'm not sure who's the actual owner of it. But that property, which is in a PUD as Mr. Luwan has, has indicated. Which likely means it's not going to be changed. Unless somebody comes up requesting variance. But. The point is though that. I agree there that the most affected neighbor would be. An area that is essentially visitate vegetation or perhaps trees, I, I don't really know what's in there. It's a lot of stuff, but. And, and I, I keep that in mind as we go along. Is there really, and, and I think as Ms. Ms. Dalpra pointed out, I mean, really. You know, who's most affected by this? And I think it would be that property to the north, which is, doesn't look like it's going to be built on to me. However, however. And this gets pretty touchy, and I'll say it, but I can't guarantee a doggone thing. I'll, I'm saying this to you, Mr. Zafar. First of all, I wouldn't be in favor of granting this variance until some dimensions. Verifiable dimensions are here in front of us, not little handwritten. Documents on a doggone mortgage survey. The reason for that is not that we don't believe you so much, but it's the applicant's. Responsibility to do this in advance, and even if. The zoning board appeals feels that. There may be some merit to giving this variance. I don't think we should do it until we have all the dimensions there. Because we're have, because what happens when the next one comes up and says, well, it's about like this and. And I got a Google Maps that show that, that here's the field that's drier than everything else, so it must be the, the septic field, come on. And you may be right, but, you know, you can get that information and, and it is. And you may be right, but you know, you can get that information and, and it is the burden of the applicant to do that. I'm sorry, I don't want to.
You're doing fine. You're doing fine.
I don't, I don't want to be a jerk. But what you gotta understand, we're seeing these things all the time. And this frankly isn't good enough.
Yeah, so.
But now here comes the sensitive part. We could send you back and postpone this for another thirty days. And I understand that's not going to be good for you, Mr. Sfar. You got money problems. But, but I can't guarantee you that other board members who may be coming on now would agree with me. And I'm not saying I wouldn't necessarily. I'd still have to see the dimensions. So the alternative, which we've never done before, is have another postponement. Again, requiring in clear terms, so there's no misunderstanding. That there has to be a drawing here based upon real dimensions that are available, or if they are not available, state the reasons why. And what you have done to try to get the information, but cannot get it for particular reasons.
Got to ask the question. So we do that. We get a architect, landscape architect, somebody that can actually stamp it and say this.
Or you may not even have to go that far. You go to the county and get their information on the septic fields. You get somebody to draw these things. Mr. Luwan, do you have any input on what if in fact we, we postpone this for another thirty days? What might be? Can you give some guidance to the applicant about what might be more specific acceptable evidence?
Yeah, well, the, the ordinance doesn't require a landscape architect or an engineer. All it says is the drawing has to be to scale. So I, I, you know, I saw that you had some dimensions on your plan, but they're not, like, I can't put a scale on that. And as I think was mentioned, it, it looks like there very well could be some good reasons for this variance. But the zoning board of appeals has to hang their hat on something. And hanging their hat on that drawing is, you know, is something that I wouldn't recommend they do. Again, not that there's not a problem. I, I, I think there probably is a problem. But, you know, we have to be consistent and look at your proposal and the next one that comes along. And all I'd be looking for is maybe a little larger of a drawing than what was presented. And something to scale. I mean, you could do, it's, it's not required that you get an engineer or it's landscape architect or a surveyor. Um, we allow, you know, zoning board of appeals, ordinance allows residents to do it themselves, but it just has to be a little more accurate than what you've provided.
And I'd all, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Luwan. First of all, does the applicant understand that? And I'm going to address it to Mr. Clark. As well as who, who has been around the block on this, as well as Mr. Sfar, who is not. Do you understand what is being asked here?
This would have been taken care of a month ago if I was in charge of doing the drawing, because I, I, I'm a drafting background. I've done, I have done drafting for almost thirty years for a four quarter company. And I know, I know what a good drawing is and what is not a good drawing. And because I am not familiar with this format and what is required of me, I'm an amateur in this field, I am solely relying on advice from others. And so I just show up when the meetings, if I was in charge, we wouldn't be having this conversation. This would have been a closed case long time ago. It's, it's just that we need to provide you.
You can do it. You know what's being requested and you can do it.
Absolutely no doubt.
The sensitive part, we gotta come back to it though, so you understand what I'm saying here. Even if you do come up with, you know, a scale drawing, which I would really want to see where the property line is to the north. But I'm sure that's available. Or if it's not available, actually, actually you can do it from some of these satellite stuff and you can find out. I, but I can't give you the guidance because I'm no expert at it. Perhaps you are as a draftsman.
Um, one question that I have is this survey that we have, uh, is part of the package. The lines that are drawn as a boundary, can we, uh, call those as official property lines or are the, are these not sub- submittable?
No, I think it would be submissive as, for what we're dealing with. I'd just like to have it verified that that is in fact a drawing. A mortgage survey on the, on the, correct, Ms. Luwan, correct me if I'm wrong. My, my expertise was never in real estate law, but as far as a mortgage survey, the rank of, of acceptable property line drawings, the mortgage survey is down a little bit on the low side. But, but I think it can be done by some sort of, without going to a tremendous amount of trouble. You know, some of these perhaps Google Earth, I don't know. But there's some other, there's some other things we've heard in the past. And you might want to just ask the folks here at the counter at the township, and they might be able to tell you. Or Mr. Luwan, give them a call. I'm sure he'll talk to you. And I mean, I'd like to see that just, just so I have a complete understanding. And then the dimensions from the property line to your proposal, whatever. But the sensitive thing still remains, and I want you to understand, if we postpone it for another thirty days, if you go ahead and get all this stuff. First of all, it may not be the three of us. We may have the full Z B A here, and I cannot speak for them. None of us can. And you may be voted down. It's a risk. And I know you've been put off once already. And we, we always try to, as a practical matter, as a courtesy, if there's going to be a limited number of commission members. The pass of variance would require a three to zero vote. There couldn't be someone who does it. So we always, or in my experience, we have always, as a courtesy, extended it to the applicant to allow the applicant to decide whether they'd rather have the full or get the next month and hopefully get the full five member Z B A make the decision so that the risk of being voted down at least arithmetically is lowered, if you understand what I'm saying.
Mr. Chairman, can I say something also?
Yeah.
If, uh, I would just, because Mr. Cangus is the alternate and he was also the alternate last week. The way the rules of the alternates go is Jerry will be following this case to completion since he started.
That is correct.
Yep. So there will just be two additional folks. Somebody's going to have to sit out. Because Jerry started, so he's going to get defended.
That is correct. For example, we have three items on the schedule next month. If we postpone this one, we have three items up, uh, and all five, uh, full members are here. Mr. Cangus would still be called upon as the alternate to continue on this particular item. Although he may not, may or may not sit on the others. You follow me?
Yep.
And yes, you're, you're absolutely right. Do you understand what we're talking about here? So you're gonna, you're gonna be stuck with him. The rest of us may or may not be there. We try to be there.
There's only two surveys in the world of surveys. One is a mortgage survey, which you're right, plus or minus two feet. And then it's called a stake survey or a boundary survey.
Or meets and bounds, or there's a few others. I remember back from my property law class. Which I didn't do very well at. But no, and actually there's a hierarchy of, I think they call it the calls, but legally, yes, there's a hierarchy of what's what trumps the next one lower down. I think it's like, God, I don't, there's various. Various.
Stake surveys show exact, right down to the eighth of an inch.
Well, you can, you can have a plat survey too.
House has got to be on that plaque.
You, you can do a lot of different things, but.
So, um, in the interest of time, because a lot of times, sometimes you are able to arrange for more accurate surveys, but in the interest of time, if I took the unmarked version of this and marked it up properly with scale and everything.
Load it up, you mean?
Load it up.
Easily, right?
Right. Would, would this survey be acceptable? If I was to re-mark it from scratch, uh, to the scale, showing where the septic fields are, septic tents are.
With actual measurements?
With actual measurements and everything.
So that we could see it and it would be clear to everybody who looked at it. I, I, I don't, Mr. Luwan, do you have a, any, any opinion on that?
Yeah, I think that would be acceptable, um, drawn to an engineering scale, so twenty, thirty, forty, fifty or sixty, you know, per, feet per inch. So an, an engineer's scale, not an architect's scale, because that's just easier to use. And, uh, you know, if you, of this given my personal opinion, not that you asked for it, but you know, if you come back with a drawing showing that those mature pines and your septic field are, are truly causing a problem, you know, I, you know, I can't speak for the zoning board of appeals, but to me, that's compelling evidence. And, uh, you know, I, I, that's all I'll say on that. So, but that, that's what I'm looking for.
And in the course of doing that, I, as a suggestion only, I cannot tell you what to do. You could show why that sized building that you want to build would not fit into another space. Even though it, you may not like to see it where it is from your back porch or something. Do you understand what I'm saying? Although you may not like it, you're the one who's requesting a variance from setbacks which really are important. And again, I can't vouch that you're going to get your variance or not. I, I can't tell you.
Side yards, rear yards, front yards are set up for a purpose. And that's why the variance board is, you know, is, is here.
That's why we're here. Yes.
Exactly. And many that had to have variances. And it, and it was, again, goes back to the practical, where it's placed and how it sits. So getting the accurate dimensions, I think, is an absolutely perfect idea. But we, we look at this, are you, you know, are you becoming closer to a neighbor that's going to cause? And those neighbors, by the way, as you said, have the right to come here and speak up and say, I don't want that.
However, it's not required that they do.
I did not say it.
People who protect the neighbors who don't show up is this board.
If it's practical and it's a side yard, and again, you talk about land that can't be built on, if that can be proven. And I have no problem approaching pole fields. I don't.
You know, one of the other problems when you're talking about, we're kind of getting a little bit off, of course, and perhaps I shouldn't say this, but I'll finish it up. Sometimes you have to take down trees to get something to fit, fit in there. Sometimes you gotta do it. But if you have, the bigger the tree, the more respect you're going to get from a lot of people. I don't, I can't say for everybody.
Yeah, these, these are all very old, they mature trees. And I totally understand, you know, your, your concern that sometimes. But like I said, you know, I love my property enough that I would just end up, you know, it's not in my heart to chop trees down, just, you know, it's, it's, I, I I would like to see the garage where I think it, it needs to go. To cut it where it's going to be an eyesore and cut the trees down. For me, that's not an option. So I'll just go with the notion that I need to come back with a better prints, better design, hope for the best. There's no guarantee.
And look for alternatives to, to try to minimize the setback. Instead of thirteen feet, could you do it? Could you get away with fifteen? This is just off the top of my head, but again, it's the applicant's burden to do this.
I, I understand. We have to keep it so far from the existing garage house. And that's what we, that's okay. We'll, we'll, we'll put it out, put it accurate. Hopefully that makes better sense to everyone.
Well, we'll see. Perhaps we see. Ms. Luwan, would a simple motion to postpone be appropriate, do you think?
Yes, yeah, that would, that would be fine.
There wouldn't be any necessity for another advertisement or any?
No, we already had the public hearing, so you're all set.
Okay. Well, Mr. Shields, Mr. Cangus, what, what, what are your feelings?
I'd go along with the postponement.
Think so?
Yeah.
Well, then I would solicit a motion to that effect.
I move that we postpone the meeting, this discussion to the July meeting.
Okay, there's a motion out on the floor to postpone variance number two, four, zero, zero, four to the July meeting.
Shields, yes. Cangus?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes and this matter is now postponed to the July meeting. I don't, I don't have what day right off the top of my head. Check with the desk here at the township. They'll be happy to give you all the details on that. Sounds good. Thank you. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is. Well, that was, that's a public.
So I don't know what I do with this report of that.
No, we don't, there is no motion to, to end the discussion. The discussion is in fact not ended. So we'll just, I don't know, it's a form.
Yeah, I know, I'm just.
Don't we let round the nose by, oh, by forms?
No, I do.
I've, we, we can figure it out. Because the discussion is not in. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of, uh, May sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Which which I did read, of course, just to acquaint myself, because I was not here.
It was actually very helpful.
Yeah, it helped a lot. I do have a correction that I noticed here on page nine. Paragraph nine, other business, the first bullet point refers to including the Washington Road Commission. And I'm quite confident that should have been the Washington County Road Commission. Do you see what I'm, do you see what I'm talking about? Okay, go ahead.
On page five, you enter the first paragraph, there are two periods.
So it's page five. At the very top of the page, the end of the second sentence, the mid ones, one period. Anything else?
That's all I found. Should have found the Washington.
Mr. Cangus, did you find any?
Missed the one on nine, so, yeah.
Okay, well, then I would solicit a motion to approve the minutes with those corrections.
Support.
Well, I.
You can't do it.
I can't do it. So Mr. Cangus is making the motion?
Yes.
To, uh, to, uh,
Change is to the.
To allow the, to approve the minutes with the changes as noted in our discussion. And that's seconded by?
Shields.
By Mr. Shields, so call the roll. Yes.
Shields, yes. Cangus?
Yes.
All right, so that, the minute, those minutes are approved. Uh, next item is other business reported playing commission liaison. Mr. Walsh is not here, so we have no. Next item is public comments. Citizens wishing to address the zoning board of appeals on matters which are not on the public hearing portion of the agenda. Each speaker shall identify him herself by name. And such oral presentations shall be limited to three minutes. Except the representative or spokesperson of an organization shall have five minutes to address the board, provided that if more than five citizens express a desire to speak, the chairperson in his or her discretion may limit the, the time of comment. Are, are there any persons, there's nobody here in the room here. So are there any persons on, on Zoom who would like to make public comment? Please raise your hand.
There is Rob Pattinson.
Uh, Rob Pattinson, Mr. Pattinson, go ahead.
Hi, Tom. Rob Pattinson, Scioto Township President. My question is, would this committee be willing to put together a ZBA application handbook? Tonight's meeting was an example of how needed it is for residents who want to do modifications to their properties, have the information properly organized for when they come to the ZBA? Would that be something you guys would consider?
Well.
We already have that.
That's an interesting question.
Yeah, we, we already have a handout that talks about all the required information that we give every applicant.
Well done. Thank you, Doug.
Yep.
Anything else, Mr. Pattinson?
Nope, that's all, that's all. It was just, it was, it was a little arduous to, to watch as, as the applicant struggled in front of the committee. And it just made me think that people need to be prepared for this committee. And it was sad that they weren't.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment. Anybody else with a hand raised, please? Oh, anybody else who wishes to make public comment, please raise your hand?
None.
Okay, no others, so actually, we can't do anything because Mr. Shields was left destroying the forum. So we'll have to wait for his return before we do a doggone next thing. I wonder if he knew that when he walked out. I expect he thinks he's going to come back here and say, oh, are we adjourned? The answer is no, we're not.
Major calls.
Yeah.
I'll just mention, since we got a moment here with the regard to Rob's question about the packet. I think, you know, Fran does a really good job of handing, you know, giving that information out to folks. So you know, there gets to be a point, you know, that, that, that some people read it and some people don't, or some people, I, I, you know, it's hard to, it's hard to figure out, you know, what, what, how deep people get into this. But we do have a little packet of information we give out for every ZBA. And it, it shows not only the zoning requirements, it shows like what the zoning board of appeals has to find, talks about what kind of plan they have to provide. It gives them a little worksheet about information that they can present to the zoning board of appeals. So, um, yeah, I, 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 you know, could we brush it up? Sure, you know, I suppose we could take a look at it. Probably hasn't been looked at in a number of years. But, um, uh, it, it is out there. And, um, and I, and I know the staff does a good job of getting that information out to residents.
Bob Clark should know better.
What's that?
Bob Clark should know better.
Well, I, no comment.
Doug, I just looked on the website and, and it is indeed on the website, that, that handbook or the, what is required for a variance. So it, not only does Fran hand it out, it's on the website. So people need to pay attention and, and be prepared.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think if we had, first of all, as a matter of division of duties, it's really not the ZBA's responsibility to do that, put, put out, as Mr. Pattinson's suggested, a, any sort of real instruction. Because this, and I'm doing this off the top of my head, maybe I'm wrong on this. But it seems to me that the, the ZBA's responsibilities are statutory. And remember, it's an appellate, it's an appellate group. So that a record, um, you know, I don't know, maybe I'm talking too much. But I, I sort of think the ZBA is not responsible to do that as much as it is the staff of the township. I don't know. Because once you start trying to put something together by the ZBA, then you're, you're bound by it and you're, you're, you're putting things into an ordinance, for example, that maybe the ZBA is not empowered to do. I don't know. Interesting question. Now you got me thinking, Mr. Pattinson.
Yeah.
Glad I could help. Sorry.
Yeah, I was, I was, I was just going to say, you know, we, over the years, you know, I, of course, I don't do office hours anymore. It's Laura who does, who meets with all these folks. But, you know, for years and years, I would meet with every single person that came in for variance for, you know, for many, you know, decades with the township. And, you know, there gets to be a point that the staff or myself can't fill their application out for them. You know, it's like we can point all the right, you know, I, I like to point to them at all the right direction about how to fill out the paperwork, try to point out, this is what I would do when I was there anyway. Try to point out, this is what the zoning board of appeals is going to be looking for. This is what you have to present. But there gets to be like this tipping point where, you know, you can't fill out their application for them because it's their application. And if something goes wrong with their application, then they're saying the township staff did something wrong. So.
Yeah, which has, which has happened in the past, I remember. Uh, you know, they sort of, an applicant will basically say, well, that's what Mr. Luwan told me to do. And, you know, there's something going, I doubt that very, very much. But.
Well, it might have felt that way to the applicant.
I don't know. It's hard to say.
Yeah, and I get it. It's, it's an unfamiliar process. It's, um, it's intimidating for some people, for many, most people, really. The most people are just homeowners. They've never done anything like this before. And, you know, we try to help as much as we can up to a point. And, and, you know, that, that, you know, so that, that's how I've always looked at it.
Yeah. Okay, well, that's all we got at the moment. So I guess the next item is adjournment. So I solicit a motion in that regard.
We'll let Jerry do it.
I'll request that we adjourn.
A second.
All right, a motion to adjourn proposed, seconded, call the roll.
Off.
Yes.
Shields, yes. Cangis?
Yes.
All right, motion is adjourned.
All right, guys.